Yeah, right. Okay, it's seven oh one, I'm calling the. Select Board meeting, April twenty eighth for the town of Newcastle. We'll start with any amendments to the agenda. Hearing none. Move on to minutes of the previous meeting, so April fourteenth. The comments.
No, I'm moved to accept.
I have a second.
Okay, first by Ben, second by Rufus, is there any other discussion on? All those in favor? Four.
Here.
And. And.
Sure. Thanks, Joe.
Karen makes five.
Karen makes five.
Okay, five in favor, she passes. Okay. Public comments on items not on the agenda. Christopher, come on up, please.
He's thinking. So, Madam Chair there?
No.
Well. Without her here, Tor is presiding over the meeting.
Gotcha, thank you, so I'll address. Sure. You can be the Chair now.
I am the Presiding Chair tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Say your name, please.
Christopher Dougherty. D O H R two I. First question is, what happened to the tradition of saluting the flag you started the meeting?
So we haven't done that. Yeah, about. Three, four years, two years, two years, amazing. The board at that time. Which consisted of pretty much everybody here except.
Joel was.
Joel was in place of Ben, so. Yeah, we decided at that point in time that we would no longer salute the flag at the beginning.
What was reason?
Um. I, I mean, I think the reason was just to. Just pass it, you know. That's, that's what I remember, I don't think there was.
There wasn't much discussion.
There wasn't much discussion about it, I think it was. Yeah, it was pretty brief, Christopher.
Thank you. Second question, last meeting I was here two weeks ago, met with you folks and made a request. About requesting.
Mailbox me?
Yeah, right.
Road Commissioner to.
Yep, and I've spoken to the Road Commissioner and I've gone out there, I just haven't had a chance to call you and discuss what, what we just, what we talked about. I believe the Road Commissioner had discussed with you about putting, there's drainage. There is a culvert now that's out there.
That's mine.
He went.
I, I was gonna donate that. And he said I could do that, but then he changed his mind, said, no, we're gonna put a twelve inch there.
Okay. So we will, we can give you the twelve inch, we're just not gonna bury it for you. It sets a tough precedence for us to continue to do. I only have a contractor who will pay time and material for. So we can give you the.
Seth said he would. Put some gravel there.
He will put, he's gonna put, he's gonna, the other concern was. The low shoulders on either side. Um, that's gonna be taken care of when they go to do the final overlay on. Island Road. So all of the issues where there's been some. Movement of the soil on either side of Station Road will get taken care of when they come through. With the equipment at that time.
Did he give you any idea of when he would do that?
This spring.
Because mailbox people said I had till the twenty ninth of this month.
That's tomorrow.
That's why I passed the letter to you.
I. My conversation with Seth was that we provide the, the culvert and you have to bury it.
He didn't tell me that, but anyway.
We can talk more offline.
I like it to be public and.
I understand.
Okay, third question is, who owns the causeway to the island road? To Cunningham Island?
That is town property.
It's town property?
The island, the causeway itself is part of the town road.
That was decided when?
Uh, there was attempts to discontinue it, but nothing was ever filed. So at this stage, we still are responsible for it.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Anybody else? Roger?
I have a couple of issues. One of them is. Roger Wilcox. Not that. Um, one of them is that they've been out working on our road last few days. And. As probably. You're not aware of shoulders of any road, whether it's a paved road or gravel. Are very, very soft right now. They're like quicksand, if you get in there, you're not getting out. And our Road Commissioner should know that better than anybody. One of his trucks last week. Got too far on shoulder on two fifteen, just before two thirteen. And he went in the ditch and he didn't get out by himself. So. They're out there working on our road, putting gravel. I spoke to the. Crew leader and he said they told him to put three hundred and fifty yards of gravel on our road. Now. Where the pavement ends and the gravel starts on my end of the road. There was a few potholes there. And. Could use a little gravel. But they did the whole road. And there was not a pothole or a rut in. And probably three quarters of it. There was a bad specs, uh, spent, uh, patch at the beginning where the pavement ended. And then there's another bad spot out by where Bill, where he lives on the other end, but the middle. There's not a rut and there's not a pothole nowhere. And they put all this gravel there. So the problem with putting all that gravel on this road where it doesn't need it, it pushes out. And it fills in the ditch. And the water has no place to run because the ditch is filled up with this gravel. That they put out there and they can't get in the shoulder out there either to bring that gravel back because they'd be stuck. They, they had a roller out there rolling the gravel as they put it down. And the roller got over to the shoulder and he got stuck. They had no business out there working on this road as soft as the road bed is right now. I mean, it, it could have waited till the road bed dried out and we would have got a much better job. And the pavement on most of our road is pretty good for considering the age of it. That pavement is twenty five years plus old. And it's held up considerably well, considering that. But where he's been running these heavy trucks over some of those bad spots. He's just ground up some of that pavement on the, on the bad spots and you shouldn't have been there. And I, somebody told me last week, he was up working on the Hudson Avenue on the other end and the road was posted still. And he had his trucks out there working on it. Why is he exempt from working on paved road, on a posted road? He's, that should apply to him as well. And he should know that.
Our ordinance allows for municipals work to be done, for contractors having worked on the road. Our ordinance states that.
But if you're not gonna improve it, you're gonna do more damage than you're gonna help it when the road bed is so saturated. It's just pure mud underneath these road beds right now. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, we're not getting what we paid for here, he's made a mess there. And I'd like him to come out and meet with me and I want to show him what, what they left. And it's a mess. So how do we do that?
I can work to arrange something, Doctor.
Okay, and then call me now. Go up there with them and show them what I'm unhappy with. Um, and the other thing that I'm happy with is. The mess across the road, and I understand that you and I have spoken about this, Kevin. And, um. The town is full close on this property. And, um, so. I guess there's a procedure that you have to go through, right, you have to go negotiate with them and, and all of that and. My wife said when she was a slut, and it comes to a point where once you foreclose. They can't make payments anymore, it has, they have to pay that in full, but they're in the reals of. Is that true?
Well, the Select Board can negotiate an agreement to get the property back in the hands of the former owner. But we do have to work with them to get their, um, under the new state law, we have to work with them to get them. Back into their property if they can or won't or don't want to, there are other steps we have to take.
So. So they. Now that it's been foreclosed, they can make payments?
Uh, we have to, we have to go negotiate what that looks like, yes.
Okay, so. Of you guys that are here tonight, has anybody drove down my road and seen this property that I'm talking about? We're all aware of. You've been to buy there all year.
Um, so. Last time I was on North Ironac Road, Roger, which probably involved some. But I was, I was looking for this, um, property.
Not a lot has changed, but better certainly. If anything, it's worse. I mean, it's a complete and utter mess over there, so whether. He loses the property or whether they stay there, something's gotta be done about the mess over there. I mean. My neighbor is telling me, he says. He says, right now, you couldn't sell your property, nobody would buy it with that mess across the street. And I mean, I think he probably got a point. You know, it is terrible over there and it's not getting any better, if, if they. Change your mattress, they throw it out the door and out back in the trailer and goes, if they change the refrigerator. It's out the door and piles up, I mean, it's a complete and utter disaster. And.
Rogers, is it just to bring awareness?
By me?
Is it just to bring awareness to the. Condition of this place, is there, I'm wondering if you have a question or point so we can get to other agenda items?
That is my point, I want to know what's gonna be done here, that's my point.
I haven't met with the owner yet and that is my, that is, that is my responsibility. I asked for the authority to, to work with the, the former owner trying to negotiate something. And I haven't come back to the board with a solution yet. That's what it's.
But also, also, if I can just jump in, we don't have as a town any ordinances against people making a mess on their own property. That's not. It's not something we have any enforcement over, if I'm, is that not correct, everybody else?
So there's, there are some state laws about illegal dump sites.
Right.
Um, we have had to classify a couple of properties that way in the past. Um, and usually, again, the town works with the property owner to come to some solution. Uh, it takes some time. But, uh, yeah, we don't have anything locally, but there is some state law.
Okay.
Be against us right now.
Yeah, at the moment.
Right, same as we are the current.
We're, we're the current owner, so, uh, yes.
It's, it's on my to-do list.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a complicated situation there, Rogers, you can imagine, but, yeah, we're aware of it.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
We got to it every day and look out there and see that, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's pretty scared.
So, uh, we, unfortunately, we, even on foreclosed properties where we own the property. Um. We've learned that we can't just go out there and, uh. Clean up. And I really can't say more than that, but there was a foreclosed property several years ago that. Um. There were a bunch of lawsuits, but. Back and forth, finally got resolved, but it took a year and some. So until, until things can be negotiated with. It's in everyone's best interest not to touch it. Which sucks for you.
Yeah.
But it's the reality of the situation.
I, I know a former code enforcement officer went out there and, and he told them they had to clean it up now, what. Law or rule decided. Um, and it did some good for a while. Didn't last long, but, so I don't know what, what he used as a. As a means to go out there and enforce that, but he did go out and speak to them about that. But it's, and, and really, it's. I don't believe they have a working septic system there. And I mean, it's, I'm not sure it's a fit place to live either.
That's the way I can look to address it, okay, Roger, I'm, I'll. Try to get this taken care of as soon as I can.
Thanks.
Any other comments not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Um, item five A, Village Partnership Initiative. Um. Kevin, do you wanna, um.
I.
Summarize what we're.
Sure. The last time this was really put in front of you, well, there were two. In February, we'll start there, February tenth, um, uh. Wright Pierce staff were in attendance along with Emily Robbie from Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, and members of the public attended to, to hear about the report and learn from the report. Um, after that presentation. Felt like there was still some work to be done with the report, so what you have included here in the link in your packet. Is the final report, which is substantially longer, so more reading, but a lot of it was similar information or, uh. Just basic modifications that were made by, or recommended changes made by main DOT. Uh, and it included all of the information from all of the former. Uh, public outreach meetings too, so it was a more comprehensive document. What I'm asking for the board tonight is either an acceptance of this report and a little bit of a discussion about. Um, what aspects of it you would like to move forward with, with the state in asking them to file design and. Um, someday have funding for. We're probably a few years out, there's a lot of money that was available six, nine months ago that is no longer available. Um. Uh, and it may be some time before DOT can prioritize this particular project. Same way they were able to a little while ago, unfortunately. Um. But at least this gives us, I mean, there's no rush, but it gives us some time to say what, what do we want? Um, are there modifications to what's being recommended by the, by the, uh. Uh, consultants? Um. You know, I mostly want to hear from the board about what next steps they'd like to take, I mean, really, it's which design do you like? Are there modifications of those designs for the two intersections in the downtown? Do you want to do this in stages? How do you want me to prepare a letter to DOT, what do you want me to include in it? I'll say I want you to accept the report tonight so I can, uh. So I can take that off my list of things to do.
Okay, so by accepting the report. We would. We would accept the report as a motion if there's any amendments or recommendations or how would we phrase it? Any comments? That would need to be. Addressed, we would attach it to the motion or how do you?
Yeah, I would, I would accept the report with, uh, these additional comments, you know, having the select board's thoughts on. What this report means for you as a board, uh, from what you understand, you've heard from the public. Uh, and how you want me to. Such a draft that letter, so it is really like, we accept this report, these are the concepts we like and, and can, and be supportive of. You know, there's a couple of options for the different nodes, uh, it'd be nice to know if there's one of these options you particularly like. Obviously DOT will have final say in what they look like, but there are concept drawings at this stage, not final engineer drawings. So, for example, if you as a board prefer the route at, um, first node, if you prefer the. The roundabout solution there over the T intersection, state so. Add that to your list of suggested changes, because I know, I believe the. Um, consultants proposed doing the T intersection, and I know DOT is supportive, more supportive of the T intersection just due to cost.
It seems more likely to happen.
More likely to happen, correct?
And, and it solves. The issues. That people have with that intersection, so, yeah, I mean, I think that. Alternative one for node one is probably a pretty clear winner, I don't think there's. Much more discussion about that, I mean, you know, the. The amount of earth that has to get moved to put a roundabout in there. That is kind of a non-starter, I think, for DOT from the sound of it. And then.
Well.
If. If we're gonna take them one at a time. Were you gonna move on or were you talking about node one?
I mean, if, if, if there's further discussion, then.
Yeah, the only, yeah, the only, the only thing that I, I'd say personally is, um. I'm not really attracted to the idea of a raised platform. There, I understand the recommendation for it to slow traffic, but. With the, um, inclusion of on-street parking. Up to node one.
Might not be necessary.
It's not as necessary, raised platforms are really hard on equipment.
Recording.
Really hard on vehicles. And, um. And you gotta paint them a lot more so that they're clearly visible.
Yeah.
And we only paint once a year.
Yeah, my, my thought about the raised section is. Somebody coming down the hill at, you know, in the middle of the night.
Forty-five.
With no traffic, no party parked, and they're doing high speed.
It's like.
And they got, they got launched over, um, so, yeah, I mean, it would have to be well marked, but I think also the T intersection. I think one thing we missed in the, um. In the, um, the initial, I guess.
in the um, the initial, I guess, proposal, if you could call that, was that I feel like we should have backed the limits of the scope back up the ramp a little bit more. Because I feel like we're not seeing the approach. You know, we started at the River Road and said, this is where the downtown village district kind of designated area starts. But I think the T could work, do its job. But I think we really need to address it, coming off the ramp, doing something. I think Jan had some comments about do it, uh, do something.
Narrowing, I think he talks about narrowing the
Maybe narrowing, yeah.
You know, quicker. I think getting up onto Route One. You know, headed south. Though, we don't want to slow anything down. I know you don't drive loaded trucks, but boy, if you're driving a loaded truck, you really gotta just have the pedal right to the floor and get everything you can out of it to get up and around and up to speed in a reasonable
I'm not even, I'm not even saying it has to be changes to pavement, curb width, et cetera. You know, and I'm not the engineer here, but I'm just thinking, looking at it coming down, you know, on a regular basis. Um, there's a bunch of trees, you know, um, you know, I don't know, I know, you know, trees tend to slow traffic.
Yeah.
But visually, if you come off Route One, it obscures your view of what may be an intersection down the hill. So you know, that's another sort of um thought that I had, you know. Maybe doing something on the side of the road that would, you know, um not just signage, but you know, something else that would kind of say, look, you're coming into a village, you know, maybe streetlights or something. I, there's gotta be some engineering trick, design trick that these um these these design firms know that would help that. That's all I'm saying, but.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Anything we can sort of throw at it to slow traffic down. To your point about the raised intersection, I feel like if we were to make the change without the raised intersection and traffic was still going through there, that's a pretty easy modification to make. If, you know, if five years afterwards, we're like, cars are still going way too fast here. Let's do something. That would be a good, you know, additional thing to do. Um, but, yeah. I I kind of agree, the raise, I don't love.
Well.
It's just a bit much for what needs to be accomplished there. I I mean, the, all the other benefits are great. You get a little bit more green space on both sides of the river road approach. Get a nice ninety-degree stop. You get a crosswalk for pedestrians. And 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 you eliminate all the confusing one-way.
Yeah.
Little roads, so.
I think maintenance-wise, it's gonna lie here.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, other than that, um all I had to say about node one.
Any comments?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, just the roundabout is a cool idea.
I, I mean, I'll be honest, I had, I had it in my mind that should be a roundabout for years, you know? But honestly, I mean, you know, the engineers are recommending this as a pretty good alternative. If, you know, I think they even acknowledge that, yeah, roundabout would be much, you know, but it wouldn't, um you know, it would be a hard feasibility to make it happen, you know, money-wise, if, you know, if it if it things are I guess, possibility of having this thing forward too from the DOT side of things too, I think, this is a pretty good solution.
We do get a lot more parking.
We get, we get more parking too.
Yeah.
Um, Karen, any comments?
Nope, it's hard to jump in, but um, no, Rufus brought up my point, which was gonna be, we could always add the raised table later, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of things we need to figure out to do in stages. I would, I would think we don't want to bite all of this off at once. Um, would be my only thought, um. You know, after reading all the stuff that they pulled together, it's a lot, it's a lot to try to do at once. And um, I I'd just like to see us maybe do it in chunks. I don't know what the best order of them is, but maybe they can tell us that.
Yeah, I I, I mean, honestly, I think it's not really up to us. I think they'll, they'll kind of tell us how you know, what's the best way for their money on how to approach this. This is my guess, um.
Yep.
And I think, um, you know, as Emily had said, sticks in my mind, this is a marathon, not a sprint. So, you know, this is only one, one part of the phase of doing this whole um, this whole project. So, you know, I think that planning is yet to be um assessed and figured out.
In terms of community feedback, it seemed like there was really no strong resistance to the end of the River Road changing, but there was some pushback on Academy Hill, Node Two changing. So if we were to take it in stages, I would say if we started with Node One, we're not gonna get any pushback, and we're gonna gain a bunch of parking, and we're gonna slow traffic down. It'd be a good place to start.
Hmm.
Um, you know, I mean, as much as I'd love to see sort of Node Two and beyond, honestly, beyond is, you know, would be great. Um, you know, from from Node Two to the bridge, to see that happen would be fantastic. But it is a much bigger project, um, and potentially more disruptive to downtown traffic flow and stuff than
It's not a bigger project, though.
Well.
No, it, I mean, it's, it's legitimately not more work. There's, there's more work gonna be involved in redoing the River Road, tearing up roads.
You think?
Yeah.
Most likely.
You look at the geometry and
Yeah.
redoing that intersection, but uh, all the, in Node Two, all that on-street parking right there, we're only adding, I think, we kind of not that many spots.
Yeah, you mean the parking spot?
I guess it's more the
Yeah.
The community feedback that we got.
Yeah, I'm just
In terms of the intersection changes.
Yeah.
That was a little dicier.
The intersection, that's all pavement.
Yeah.
So, it's just reconfiguring the actual geometry of the intersections. It's not moving roads, not, I don't, I'm not trying to
Yeah.
Be contrary, just to be contrary, I'm just saying, like, yeah, we did here. People are attached to the way that it is now, absolutely.
Um, but I also want to remind us that Node One, Node Two is sequential for a reason, because Node One
Slows everything down.
Is, they're not mutually exclusive, so you can't just do Node Two and expect all the issues to be solved. Because Node One slows everybody down before you get to Node Two.
Yeah.
So you really have to do Node One if you don't do anything.
Yeah.
You know, anything else.
Um, another point completely outside of what has been discussed here, but that was just sort of brought to my attention in the last week. Um, is there gonna be any charging stations in all these new parking spaces? Are we gonna, you know, there's, there's some funding or was funding available for that sort of thing that we might be able to go after and designate, you know, a couple of these spaces as charging spaces, just to, just to throw that into the mix, because it's not complicated enough. But it might be something that would bring a little more funding into the overall project and would be smart to think about while we're, while we're, you know, addressing all of these other issues. Just wanted to put that in there for
Good thought.
General consumption.
Good thought. Node Two, I kind of feel like they I don't want to be too feel like they did us a little dirty on Node Two. Feel like they were really pushing us and us towards a specific really don't like. So if you look at, if you look at alternative two for node I'm not talking about any of the stuff between, you know, going down to the bridge, just, just the intersection. Um. That is a nice, tight four-way intersection. Um, un-traffic light, lighted four-way intersections work best when they're tighter. So that you can make eye contact with the people who are stopping. Um, and wave and see them. If you compare the geometry of just the intersection there to the intersection, you know, alternate, alternative one. That's a horrible four-way, and it's a terrible, absolutely horrible four-way intersection.
Number one.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's
I agree.
And I feel like they kind of didn't put a lot into this, and 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 here's why I feel that way. Um, there are semi-trucks that come down off Academy Hill and turn left every day. No problem. And they're not proposing to change the curb radius on that at all.
Well, they are. The, 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 the Mills Road moves over. And
I'm not talking about Mills Road.
Oh, where are you talking?
They turn, they come down Academy Hill and turn right.
Oh, oh, turn right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, that curb radius isn't changing at all in any of these alternatives. Um, and and their reasoning, it felt like to me, to keep the very wide turn, right turn coming off, you know, down the ramp and across the front of the church and and stop at the four-way intersection, you get what is to accommodate truck traffic. Well, look at the difference in curb radiuses and look at what it's created is this, like, just ridiculously long um sidewalk crossing that
Snow Two proposed alternative one, is that who you're looking at right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I put it on the screen.
Yeah.
Others could see.
Um, it's just a horrible geometry. Don't, if you're, if you're sitting, you're at oblique angles. Um, so if you're sitting at Academy, coming down on Academy Hill and you're the only real person you can make eye contact was first sitting on Mills Road to your left. Uh, and that's an oblique angle. You can't really see anyone else. And I, I just don't understand why they, it just feels like they really wanted to push us towards alternative two. Uh. And I always did a little bit more engineering. Now, it's, it's not that I'm necessarily against two, but if they can, if that's an okay curb radius that I just, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
They could have tightened it up and made a better, an actual better four-way intersection without a slip lane.
Mm-hmm.
And it would have been just fine. I'm not against the slip lane. In fact, it was always my preferred um configuration for the intersection to maintain that. Um, and again, provided you've got the slower traffic coming up of Node One, intersection will perform just fine like any other intersection. It, it does everything that we wanted it to do.
Kind of the only difference really, I think, between, uh, there's geometry is different in alternative one, but
It's like
Sea of pavement, right? It's a sea of pavement, and the only thing it seems like that's really different is they're adding that little island, wanted slip lane, but you kind of got the scene.
It's relocate Mills Road.
And relocated Mills.
And they relocated.
Yeah. That is a difference.
And where?
Alternative two, right here.
In, um, if you look at the, up there, you'll see, Bill, you can see there's a car that hidden photograph.
Yeah.
This now sidewalk, so they're moving
Push it about
Towards the bridge.
Ten feet downhill.
Down on the patch property.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Versus what you see here, more or less exactly in the same footprint.
Yeah.
Yeah, it straightens out the, the cross.
Correct.
Which makes a lot of sense, honestly, like, no matter how no matter what ends up there, I think that that's an important feature, you know? Uh, an important improvement to make.
Mm-hmm.
No, alternative two, I mean, it, obviously, it obviously makes it much simpler, easier to understand and navigate. The safety is, is a lot better pedestrian. Crossings are a lot safer and better, can actually get from veterans' park to public house without taking your life in your hands.
Or having to go all the way up.
Which no one does. I mean, if you ever sat out in front of the public house and watched people, they just
Yeah.
Take their life in their hands, you know?
But I guess I'm, I'm just not, I'm not convinced you can't combine alternative one and alternative two for the better part of each option. I guess that's what I'm thinking. You know, like, why in alternative one? Uh, where Mills Road does not shift over, um you know, that Yeah, yeah, and that's and that's what I'm that's what, that's what I, yeah, and that's exactly right. I'm thinking, you know, as we move forward, I know this much for sure. Uh, option three with the roundabout is nowhere near being an option. So we can cross that one off the list in my mind. Um, with red ink.
It's, it's ridiculous.
It's ridiculous.
And it was only proposed as a ridiculous option to highlight
I get it.
Right.
But we might as, we might as
Had to be present.
We're here to make comment. I mean, we might as well be on the record saying that is ridiculous, but
I think maybe if that's the comment we pass along is that I'd love to see, you know I'd love to see some, a little bit more work done, like you said, or to bring alternative one closer to alternative two.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I'm not convinced there has to be um, a slip, a slip lane.
Yeah.
I'm just not, I don't, and it, and everything else being equal, I'm not sure it really gains you all that much. You still have a stop bar. Right? Um, trucks, if the argument is trucks, I think that's just trucks are already able to turn off of Mills Road, onto Academy Hill, off Academy Hill, onto Main Street, heading out of town. Those are the tightest radiuses anyway, and anything that they've proposed is a wider radius than that, so the, the truck engineering it for trucks, this isn't a whole, a whole lot of weight in my mind. Uh, at the moment, like, faced with this, I think, I think more work could be done to determine whether that slip lane is truly needed. And I don't even think the traffic count necessarily bear it out.
And to that point, uh, or along those lines, keeping that in, in two keeping the intersection roughly the same size, and then having the bulk of your trucks that you're gonna see through that intersection making a tight radius turn through the intersection to get out of the downtown is gonna slow things down significantly, rather than having it be a little bit larger like in one, giving the space I think is, is a better solution there.
It's, you, you're talking about if you're coming up
Turning left.
To get out of town, go up the ramp?
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna matter either way.
I think that's gonna be the major, the majority of your traffic coming from that direction, it's going left.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the, the one-offs coming down the hill or off of Mills Road, those will, those will happen.
Yeah.
But it's not gonna affect traffic that off, being, being a tight intersection.
Yeah, but you're saying, when a truck comes out of there, you think that's gonna
Coming from downtown, making that lap.
On, you know, alternative two?
In alternative two.
How do you figure? I don't, I don't really follow.
Because you're gonna be, you're gonna be you're gonna be swinging in front of the main street traffic that's heading, if they're either heading to Mills or Academy Hill.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it appears to be a large distance away in two, but in one, it's even greater.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying. So, this is the same situation when we've got in Deremisgada at the light in front of the Baptist Church.
Yeah.
Where if people don't actually stop on the stop bar, which is back
Mm-hmm.
then trucks
Can't swing.
Can't swing as well. I've, I've seen them do it, but they inch it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Really hard. Yeah, or they back up. Or they just sit there like an idiot, not knowing what to do. Which is what happens more.
I think there's more, honestly, I, I think the, the shift of Mills Road to me is just a little bit. Of heavy lift. That's just, uh.
The true hearing of all of this hasn't been done yet, right?
What, no, there's no engineering. This is just conceptual.
Right, right. So that when we get into the true engineering of it, I think we can probably. Talk with them about. These things, then they may have a little bit of a different opinion than the concept plans.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. Um, the pros and cons of. Alternative one and two, you know, where's a better starting point? Um, and maybe it's hard to decipher that in this meeting. But yeah, I think combination of those two options, there's merits of both. Um, the way out. I, I just want to mention what I, I'm not sure if this is a drafting error. Or just, um. How this works, but as you come down Academy Hill, and this is in either option one or two. And right. At the stop street. With the public house to your right. You gotta kind of shift over. In other words, that center line is not. The cars are not parked. So it looks like the sidewalk is not. In the correct position. It's kind of an odd shortage. Kind of have to come out of that stop street and then shift over. Which I don't think is probably the very intent. I hope not.
Right.
Seems a little weird. Anyway, that's aside.
The, I think, and I don't think we have room for it, but the only improvement I would see on. Two would be if. We could get a couple more cars out of the. Versus the four way stop. The slip lane would allow us to get a few cars out of the traffic at the stop sign. And our heaviest traffic does come down off Route One in our traffic counts. Um, I don't, I don't know how to scale those little cars are. It doesn't, I don't think they're quite to scale. You know, but if we could get. Even three or four cars out of that. Line going up to the stop sign by having the slip lane, that would be helpful from a traffic flow standpoint.
Are you referring to the blue? The blue squares?
Are they blue? They're so small on my screen right now. That, what, what are supposed to be cars, you mean?
Well, I don't think they're cars. They're just, it's just a diagram of a rectangle for parking, syndicating.
Oh, no, they're arrows. Now I can see now that Kevin zoomed in. I can see they're.
Oh, 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 okay. Yeah, those are arrows, the black things. Yeah.
So right now, it doesn't look like maybe more than two cars could be at the stop sign before they would start to block the slip lane. It would be nice if. You know, to pull some of the cars out of the, the line at the stop sign by letting them down the slip lane. But I, I don't know how many will be able to fit.
So like.
Maybe by getting rid of a little bit of the green at the park, they could start the slip lane a little earlier to get a. The, get more cars out of that stop line, lane. So I don't know.
Splitting the, splitting off your, your, your right turn, slip lane traffic closer to the church.
Yeah.
Yeah, just after the church entrance.
Yeah. Cause if you get, if you get more than three or four cars in a row that want to turn. Down slip lane. And they're stopped. Cause they're, they are, they're stopped until there's nothing coming out of the intersection. Then you can back up. Quite a ways. The rain.
Right.
Yeah, I think, um, um, I forget his name from T Y one.
Uh, Eric, uh, Tom Erico.
Tom Erico, I thought, you know, I. I mean, I don't, I don't think he was resistant to the idea of the four way either. I thought he, I thought he kind of. Thought it could work. Or, you know, he said the, the math may, you know, allows it to work. Um. So I'm not. You know, I'm not going to second guess their. Traffic data and, you know, the engineering on this, but. No, I think, you know, there's an alternative somewhere in between without the slip lane. Maybe we should, you know, hear what they say about it.
And slip lane was, was. A recommended alternative just because we have so much traffic coming down off Route One. It's just trying to deal with it a little bit. Better.
Takes a little pressure off, I would, I can imagine.
Yeah. So what are we looking to do here? Come up, come to a consensus on which one we want to recommend?
Uh, I, I've taken some notes and this is, this is what I've gathered. So node one as proposed. Uh, future, potential future improvements for raised intersection, more work, more. Work further up the off ramp of Route One to encourage the slowing of traffic. Uh. Consideration of car charging spaces on any stretch of this. And then node two. Not convinced we need a slip lane. More work could be done to merge the first two alternatives to address sightline and turn radius. Concerns, if the slip lane is the solution, can it be moved? So that it starts earlier, closer to the chart. Um, allowing for the. Cueing of cars on at the four way. That's what I've gathered from this and that's, I think enough to say. You know, we accept the report as is. These are the, these are the things we believe could be. Changed or improved as part of the discussion with the OT. Next step is essentially asking them to start their process.
Yeah.
And there's a draft, um. I met, forgot to mention at the beginning, then in the second meeting in February. Emily Ravi put together a full next steps process for this.
Hmm.
And then next step process is essentially sending a letter to the DOT. I have a, an example from Norway, Maine. They did one recently. Um, which I'll just do, look to duplicate and bring back to you at your next meeting. If this.
Kevin, could you also please erase the parking spots in front of the Tana Scott? They've got three parking spaces there, but actually we have parking for four without them. But if they block, if they use those to block our parking, we're going to be actually.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't that make sense? If we're going to continue to use up the parking that we have by the Tana Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah, Rob, you want to make some comment?
Yeah.
Can you come up and?
Sure, sure. So I just, um. In the.
Your name and.
Rob Allison. They're just behind us here. Um, Pleasant's room. The, um. In, in the intro to this report, they referenced the com plan and all the. The ideas of the com plan about. Improving the downtown area. But this plan really ignores that. I mean, it's, it adds some parking spaces. You know, a handful more parking space than we have now. We all know how big. The main DOT land is through Main Street from node two to the bridge. Massive amount of property. That this doesn't really take advantage of. And I think. That, that, the idea from the com plan was we could use all that to do something cool, whether it's. You know, like, um, angle parking, have a whole bunch of parking, or whether it's basically a linear park. That connects, you know, Veterans Park to the bridge. We can do something that really, you know, makes a, a, a town center that could then be built on commercially. And sort of encourages people to be there. In some ways, this plan. Undermines an effort to do that. By just adding some parking spaces in the exist, you know, along the existing roadway. Um, and I think that's a missed opportunity. And I know that this, this particular study wasn't. They clearly, this wasn't kind of within their scope of what they were thinking about. But I think that the whole. Whole thing that, that personally I found interesting about the VPI was, okay, here's a chance to. By looking at the transportation issues. We can then start to get at what the town was talking about in the com plan about really making a town center. Um, and, and using all that public, there's all this public land that goes, you know, right up to the standard. Um, you know, right now, so I mean, we've heard some people. Feel like those were their private parking spaces in front of the apartment buildings, but that's all public land. Um, on the, on the other side of the street towards the Shuck Station. The, the, the sidewalk, the actual property line is like ten feet back from the sidewalk. There's a whole bunch of land there. It's kind of no man's land right now. Property owners can't really use it. The town's not using it. And I think that that's really what I think. In, in the long run, that's, I think, our opportunity. And so I just, I, I, I'm a little bit afraid that this plan. Kind of undermines an effort to really take advantage of that. Um, and, and I don't know if that's a comment to make. Now about this plan, cause I, I understand this plan was just a bit more focused really on the nodes. Um, but. And, and again, they reference the com plan and, but then they really don't follow through. So that's just sort of my reaction to the, to the report. Um, and I don't know. Consider that.
Yeah, I think we got a reference to what our request was for the VPI as well. Which really didn't address that. In our initial request. To the DOT.
Okay.
Um. Pragmatic, you know, I think those are kind of the elements of making this really nice kind of village atmosphere of what we're talking about. So I don't know, maybe that's further discussion. Opportunities. Um. To partner with the DOT and find funding if we.
Right. And, and I, I think I recognize that, I mean. When we started this, we were in a different funding environment than we are likely to be for a while. But I guess I'd want. I, in my mind, just think about that we're not sort of going in a direction that makes it harder to go where we thought we, where it seemed like we'd go.
So maybe we could include enough that. That says, you know. Something along the lines of. You know, instead of just blasting. On street parking down from the bridge to. To. Um. You know, further consideration of the goals outlined in the com plan.
Increased pedestrian.
Usage of the public space. You know, we're. I, I, I really hesitate to say anything about like work with the DOT about those. They're never going to change. They're never going to change. They don't want to.
Put, put the power lines underground.
Oh, nice, yeah. Yeah, yeah. The, the setbacks that the DOT has from the bridge to the public house. They'll never, they'll never change.
They'll never give them up.
They'll never give them up.
But, but then, but then let's do something public.
But we could do something. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'll just share again quickly to point out what we're talking about. You can see there's in this map, there's a line here. That's close to the building. Close to these buildings. This is the DOT's right away. So technically, this is all public space. It could be. Better utilized. And you can see on the other side, the line is into. The gas station.
Their warning is partly on DOT land.
Correct. So that's all public space.
Yeah.
Um, uh, where Shuck Station is. I think that even goes back. Behind or against the fence that's there.
Like, yeah, it comes across in front of the fence and then the triangle up.
Yeah.
To include a. Uh, underground.
So you don't need more road. What you need is more.
It, it's finding ways to use that, that's public land. It. Should be, have public use, I think. And that, and, and, and that's the kind of thing that the com plan envisioned.
I think it's also what, who's the team? I don't know if we know that yet. It has to be developed too, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Who's going to be the? Design and engineering team that takes this forward. Um, I don't want to diminish what great future T Y L is done at all, because I think. This is awesome. But engineers think like engineers and solve the problems.
Right.
And, you know, um, but, you know, when you introduce like a landscape architect or designer. That also asks what if? And says to the team like, well, what if you did this? Um, I think it's a creative mind to put into the. Build a team with maybe, maybe we have that request, you know, like. You know, we fund an extra, you know, design firm just to say the what if, and you know, see how that fits in. You know, to their work. DOT is. As. Um. You know, they've. Accepted that in, in the, in the past. I mean, I could. You know, I'm thinking of the South Bristol Bridge. Where they had a plan to just design something that solved the problem of the swing bridge. You know, it was. It was actually the community effort that hired a designer. And, you know, with the what if. And the DOT said, accepted it. And so, yeah, you know, we could, we could do something like that. So I think it's, I think it's having great team to. Give these ideas into it. Right?
So I can add another sentence about, as outlined in our comprehensive plan. I would like to incorporate more of the right away as such a public space.
Also, I mean. On the road out there. Yeah, on, on, on that note, I'm just looking at this and, and listening to what you said, Rob, and, uh. I'm realizing like, uh, this, this concept. Does add one pedestrian. No. No, it doesn't. There's, there's three pedestrian crosses between the bridge.
Those exist now.
And those exist now.
Yeah.
And if we want.
Two of them do. Was it just two of them, right?
Oh, no, there is that, right. The one, the one, um, from the Shuck Station, that doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. So they're adding one.
There is one new.
They're adding one. Um, but. How many? If we're. If we're trying to create a village, we're thinking long term, even if they don't use it. Shouldn't there be more than three in that long stretch?
Well, yeah, I mean, right.
Is this a question?
Yeah, it's just a question. But I think, Rob, what you're, you're. You're even specifically talking about the big space kind of behind the red. Is it on there?
Well, it, it. All, all the way across. I mean, from, from on both sides, it's just, just so much space that, that again, you know. You can, you can use it. It, it, it's not private land. It can be developed.
Yeah.
It's not, and in this plan, it still just becomes this middle space. Between the sidewalk and the, and the properties. That doesn't have a lot of use, but as a public space could be massive. You know, could, you know, you've got, it could be, I mean, I, you kind of envision like a linear park the whole way. That just makes it this really cool. Place that people want to be.
Right. I could see if that were a linear park, then, you know. One day a month. Uh, maybe the, all the parking spots on that side of the street are food trucks.
Right, yeah.
Set up and you can.
Right.
Have a street festival or something.
Linear farmer's market.
Yeah, yeah. It become, it becomes a public, a truly public space.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think it was a good point.
Have to get permission from DOT to do that, Rob?
Well, that's, I mean, that's in a, in a partnership between the town and the, you know, the, the town. You know, given the vision in the com plan, saying we want to work with DOT. To make this vision, I mean, we can't do it without DOT. You know, it's DOT land. Um, and if we're. Doing that in collaboration with addressing. The traffic issues in these nodes. I mean, that's kind of, that was, that's kind of the beauty of this whole effort is that it's a, a way. To reach some goals of, of DOT and goals of the town in a way that are complementary. Makes everybody happy. They, I mean, DOT likes doing things that people aren't yelling at them about. So it, that, I mean, that's kind of the, as I see it, that's the whole point of the exercise.[1649.84]
Gotcha, thank you.
That is the program we're working with the state on. It's called the Village Partnership Initiative. And the whole program is really about the town and the state working together to make a village. Center what the community wants to. Not what the DOT is going to come and slap some pavement down and.
What's the elevation of that road? Does anybody know?
What do you mean elevation?
Of the roadway in front of the Damar Scott Building?
Well, the Damar Scott standard. Go back to the.
I think it's on those plans, but it's probably like, um. As I remember, it's like twenty to thirty feet. Above sea level, but you know, the. By the roadway and then, you know, goes up as you go towards the bridge, but I think it's still twenty or thirty feet there, but I think it is. There are.
So that won't be flooded in my life.
No, I don't think.
Not likely to.
Not, not like across suburb.
Yeah, I, I, I thought this previously in our February meeting, but. The, you know, talk of the four-way intersection as opposed to the slip lane, which. Which, uh, so if there were like a four-way, you would allow Veterans Park to grow. Which is better civil civic space.
Right.
And so that offers something to the idea of a village. You know, so. Yeah, I mean, we're. So I think we're still trying to solve the. Just the traffic flow, which is a good thing solved, but. At the same time, there's a little extra, we're missing a little extra opportunity in the discussion.
Yeah, well, you're not wrong. We've talked about this before. If you look at alternative number two. And you completely remove the slip lane, you square off the corner for Veterans Park.
Right.
It becomes a, a, a square.
All that.
So we could have a village square instead of a village pie? That'd be good.
A village half moon.
Is that part of the CFP right away?
DOT, no.
DOT?
No.
It's, it's kind of funny.
A little bit of it.
A little bit of it is.
Stars, yes, it does start to cut off the front of that.
Yeah.
It's not all of their part. It's not directly in front of the buildings. A few feet. On the road, correct?
But then it comes in, right, on the south side.
Yeah, but it goes, it goes in, down, up.
Well, parking. As well as.
Are charging stations paid or unpaid? Or both?
They'd be user fees, they'd be user charged. Yeah.
Unlike a Damar Scott.
Well, but that business model isn't working very well, so. They're in the process of. The, the ones that are in Damascotta were done by a grant. And they're, they're having a tough time changing that. It took them a long time to get parts. But the ones that are done as a, you know, you, you start charging, pay a fee to charge it. Uh, that model works a bit better, especially with maintaining those systems.
I've seen municipal ones that you have like a half hour free and then you start charging.
Right.
And lots to it. Yeah, there's all kinds.
Okay, so.
Have everything?
I think I do.
So maybe a possible motion is to accept the report from right here stated April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five and instruct the town manager to submit a formal letter to the main of DT. With, um, comments gathered. From the board.
From this evening, yes.
From this evening.
Yep.
And moves it seconded by Tom. Okay, any further discussion?
Seems like general consensus, note one, as is, as I mentioned, all those.
Node one, node two. With your comments, right?
Yep. Some of these conversations about. Like to potentially see better use of the right of way. There's some examples that are outlined here, but we'd like to go further possibly. I think it's just tweaks. Yes, that's what it seems like. It's like, concept is good, it just needs. And there, there is.
Polishing.
Multiple opportunities for both public input as they design. To, to the proper engineering for this work. There'll be lots of opportunities for both board and public to participate.
Sounds good. Yeah, I, I just want to go back to your first comment, Kevin, which is, you know, where we are in the process. I don't. You know, I don't think there's any more money coming our way. That we can, we can hold our breath for, so if there's money there that there's, you know. That we can access or the DOT is going to access at this point. I don't think time's on our side, so I think it's best to keep moving this forward, keep this going and try to get funding as soon as we can.
Okay. All those in favor?
Well, is there any more discussions? Yeah, okay.
Nice try Rufus. Just trying to move it, man.
We shall vote. All those in favor? All right, that is five. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to. New biz, I'm sorry, annual meeting. Five B, annual town meeting warrant. Okay, we've gone through. Quite a bit on this, but. Is there any, anything the board wants to discuss tonight?
On the, on article two. There's a typo. Uh, I think either. Article two. Number two is probably supposed to be sanitary district, not school committee, because number three is school board.
That is supposed to be. So, um, yep.
Yep. Great, so they're sanitary district.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vote for Rufus.
Yeah, hopefully I. I, I'll, I'll do the write-in for the sanitary district.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yay.
Or the school committee, whatever. Get a jawline somewhere. All right, yes, thank you for noticing that. I'll. Fix the page. Wow, how did I miss that? Because it. It looks right. It does feel right. It looks right, right, but it's just not, yep.
Okay. Great.
Rufus, can we help you, can we help you campaign somehow with this?
I don't know how one campaigns for a write-in, but yeah. I don't know, probably just tell the people in this room and.
Get the order, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, do. Oh, oh, hey.
Thank you Rufus.
Yeah, yeah. I ran it by my wife, she's cool with it, so. That's important.
What else?
There were, so Friday I sent the link to this warrant article. And thank you Karen for noticing that there were in the public works, there were two lines that were blank. Uh, the numbers were there and the sums added up, but for some reason they were white in my spreadsheet. So it wasn't, you know. Black numbering, it was white, so. Uh, I checked that this morning and sure enough, uh, it was just a. Literally the numbers were there, just they were. In white, and so that's been fixed, so the warrant now actually shows the physical numbers. The, that doesn't change the bottom line. Uh, there's a summary sheet in there that shows you where the, where this all stands. It also incorporates what I've got for a tentative number from the school department. Which is a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase from. From last year to this year. Big piece of that, I wouldn't say half of that, is, uh. There's no use of fund balance this year. Last year they used a significant amount. Four hundred thousand or so. No, six hundred thousand dollars of fund balance. Last year, so now they're making up for that. And they have to make up for, um, additional costs. So, you know, they're looking at a one point two million dollar hole. Uh, our town, based on the percentages, is responsible for three hundred and ninety thousand. I confirmed, I had shared, uh, sort of my fuzzy math with Lindsay and she said, yep, you understand this correctly, so. What I just stated is more or less accurate.
Ouch, but, okay. We get it.
That, I mean, the school board hasn't voted on the budget yet, that's May sixth, so there's still opportunity for the members of the public to participate in that process.
Well, they have voted on the expenses, so.
They have.
So yeah, that's not going to change, but yeah. Didn't vote on the revenue side.
I thought that was the finance. Oh, that's meeting, their meeting in May third.
They have, they have half of this. The balance sheet approved right now.
Right, the expenditures, not the revenues, so they may end up using some more of their fund balance this year. To offset that, but that just. You're just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. Yeah. So the translation is, what is it, nine point oh five? With over nine percent.
With the school, yes, it is.
Yeah, for our town.
Yep.
For taxes raised.
Yeah, when you, you know, when you look at that budget summary, it's a little confusing because. The, it looks like the education budget isn't going up very much. Or actually, it's going down by eleven thousand dollars. But when you look at the, um, pass-through amount of federal, or I'm sorry, state reimbursement for education. It's going down the whole amount, because instead it's passing directly to the new RSU. So that four hundred thousand dollars, uh, is no longer coming to us. And which would theoretically reduce the education budget, so if you look at last year's, it reduces by that. If the actual increase from year to year is going to be about eleven, eleven point four percent increase. So it's, it's pretty substantial.
We're gonna have a, a little bit of explaining to do in the town meeting. Some of the sections go up, you know, way up or way down, but it's because. We've moved things in expenses to where they belong now. Like the harbor master, all that stuff and the code enforcement and. You know, there's just a number of lines that have changed, but. It's just in a different section now. So some things that went down to zero didn't really go down to zero, it's just moved into a different section of the budget.
Right.
So we'll have to explain all that.
I'll work on some write-ups before the meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to dip it up our sections again.
Okay.
I'm still not sure. Everybody. I'm just still not sure we shouldn't produce capital. Capital roads.
I would recommend we do that at the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I, I, we should have numbers ready, I think is what I'm.
Oh, yeah, I intend to. I had hoped to have it for you this evening.
If we reduce it by two hundred. We get approved for the nine hundred thousand dollar. Loan bond, then, you know, does this, if we reduce capital roads by three hundred this year, this, if we do about four hundred, we do this. Just feel like we need to have those levers. Ready to go, feels like a gut punch to. You know, be proposing. Another ten percent increase. After last year.
Only nine. Sorry. No, I think you're right, having. Having an alternative. To a nine percent increase. In the form of, okay, here's bond rate, here's how we'd go about doing it. I think we need to present that to the town. So that people can decide, well, do we want to completely fund everything we're doing, or do we want to?
I, I can guess how.
String it out.
Station's going to go. That anybody doesn't have special interest on that road project that affects them. And if they're not in that room, it's, it's going to get changed.
Yeah. But if the bond's already been passed by the town. Then it's.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if you.
It's a different story.
Um, yeah, I mean, if you, if you give a roomful of residents the option. To reduce the tax burden. Why wouldn't?
It's not always the case, so, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but it's not always the case, you know, we've gone. Gone to town meeting and asked for more money on things and they approved it, I. It's just a, it's just a question of how we want to pay for it. I think we're all in lockstep about the fact that we need to. And. That's an important message. That we need to be very clear on. These are the, these, these are the things we need to do to continue doing, you know. What we need to do for our roads, for our public works. And, and the board is, I think, committed to that. It's really a question of.
How we fund.
How we fund it. And do we, do we continue to pay for everything? Every year? Or, um, you know, like, we've got this bond issue, we. Take a chunk of that, reduce capital roads by that amount, pay it out over time.
But I also.
Not all of it.
Yeah.
Because then we'd set ourselves up for.
We just move it to next year.
Well, yeah, exactly, so I think it's just a question of what the right number is.
I get it, but you know, I just returned to the idea that. I mean, the municipal side of this is only five percent or so. Which is, I think, is a reasonable. It's a reasonable increase in light of escalation and. And just the general economy and, you know, inflation. Inflationary measures, but. You know, so. Hate to say, you know. It's the school budget. That's, you know, it's outlined, that's, you know, the increase here. It's not the roads, it's, you know.
No.
The roads, the roads is a good tool to minimize the.
Yes, it's the only lever we have.
It is, no, exactly.
Absolutely.
But at the same time, I think. You know, going to a school budget meeting where they approved a thirteen million dollar budget. And there was three residents in the room. That ain't right. You know, I think that has got to be. That's where the money is, you know, and, you know, yeah, we can save two hundred thousand dollars out of, out of the roads and, and it'd make the burden feel better for. Me, myself and everybody, my neighbors and everybody else, but. Uh, we also, we've got to ask the school, you know. Be there, ask them, you know, what's, you know, what's going on with these increases, you know, because those just. And I'm not saying that RSU forty-eight now is. You know, I think they would argue, and I, I think Lindsay has, that, you know, their, their increase is better or less than other schools. Which is true, so, you know. I think they're doing their work too, but, you know, there is, there is increases that are outside of our control, so.
It's still sixty percent of our budget.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, no, I think, I think we could do that, but, um, I mean, I, I agree with what your premise is, but. You know. We have in the past discussed. Shortchanging the roads. When we realize that we still have forty-two miles of roads that we have to maintain and keep up to date is not. The best value. For the resident. So. But. Maybe next year, you know, schools have only got a three percenting, who knows? So what does that put us for, um. A motion we have. We're looking to move this. Warrant.
With the friendly amendment to fix the school committee to. The typo, just the typo.
Uh, so I'll make the motion to set the annual town meeting warrant for June tenth and moving on June sixteenth, send notice to Michael Pitis.
I guess, notice. Did I really miss that? I hear that too.
Parenthesis. With the typo. The informally inhabitants of the town of Newcastle said meeting as a man.
So I'll second it.
Karen got it.
Okay, Ben. Makes motion, Karen seconds it. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? There's five. In favor, motion passes. Okay, um. Okay, moving to item six A, new business, sale of the surplus. Bangor ladder. Kevin, do you want to explain this? I love the, I love the. The design of this thing, I think, this gave me ideas about the ladder that I, the extension ladder.
Yeah, I was just like, what is this thing? So it's actually designed and in, it was designed in Bangor originally. Angor man. Actually, Thomas could probably talk to more about how often they're using this ladder. So there you go. And how long you been there? Yeah, so it's been a while since the, the crews used it, um. I believe they acquired in early two thousands and then shortly after that, Damar Scott got a ladder truck. So I think they trained with it for a little while still, but then realized they didn't need to utilize it when. It takes quite a few, uh, people to raise this thing. Uh, and it's from a workers' comp claim, I don't really want it, so, um, just asking for the board to allow me to put it up for sale. Probably has a value of about a grand or maybe two. Maybe. Yeah, it's.
Is it forty foot? That's the.
Forty foot ladder, yeah.
Painter might want.
Yeah, that's what my thought is, probably going to go to a painter.
All right, motion to authorize the town manager to sell the forty-foot Bangor ladder and. To allocate the proceeds to the fire truck reserve.
So move.
Second.
This moves, Ben seconds. Any further discussion? Yeah, all those in favor? Okay, opposed, motion passes. Um, okay, new business, item six B, road discontinuance. Rufus, you're giving us a rude. We're giving you.
You're.
Giving you the.
We, yeah, um. Molly and Rufus approached the town about, um. Discontinuing this road, there's a process, I asked our attorney to help me understand or help the board understand. That, uh. That letter is included in your board packet. I have an updated version, which actually says Newcastle Select Board on the top of it, so. Fix that, um, but it's not in the packet, he just gave it to me today, um. Really what this comes down to is if the board is open to it, and there's a formal process we have to follow. It includes. that includes having a conversation with the other abutting property owners. Um, and if, uh, everyone's open to it, we don't have to pay them for it, just formally dissolve our ownership. Uh, I don't know if there's interest in retaining right away. That's all stuff that we'd have to discuss. So the question is, does this board want staff to begin the process to explore the discontinuance? As a letter, next step is a letter to the abutters.
The, I guess, let's say the procedures all go smoothly. Everything gets worked out. We're looking at maybe a fall special meeting.
Correct, yeah, this would not be addressed for town, annual town meetings via fall or, yep, early September. That work for you in your family?
I mean, the sooner I know the better, so that I can make sure that I have the right gear to be able to plow myself out.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, what it really boils down to is it's essentially our driveway, and so the potholes and the failing ditch, these are all things that I can address. But it's not my property, so I feel weird addressing them. Um, and, yeah, I mean, it's, don't get me wrong, I love getting plowed and sanded every storm, like, I'm gonna miss that. But at the same time, it kind of feels like the town is paying to plow my driveway, which doesn't feel great. So, um, and I'm perfectly capable of all of the maintenance that's required, so. Um, and it's, and I don't know if it's actually discontinued from the far end or what the legal status of it is, but it's really, it's a dead-end road that ends at my house. So.
Yeah, and the ma, and the map, the little screenshot I took from Google Earth to put on this, uh, item commentary shows that goes further than.
I mean, it goes all the way back to the river. It does, it connects. It's, it's, yeah, it goes all the way through, but there's a gate at the far end. Um, you know, my property is the only property that is only accessible from Robinson Road.
Yeah.
Everybody else has access from River Road or from Snead Spur, so. I mean, it's just, it just seems like, you know, the town put in a new culvert, I'm happy. Like, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll deal with it from here, guys, thanks. But, yeah, that's sort of where where that's coming from. I just, you know, I'm, I'm watching the, the potholes get bigger and the the ditch get smaller and looking at my excavator sitting there, not fixing them. So, that's I don't know.
All right. Motion.
I'll, I'll recuse myself from the vote.
Really? Motion to authorize town manager to draft a butter letter to discontinue Robinson Road for the select board's approval. Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll make the motion and just add on that, um, there'll be a whole process that involves public hearings and um, so this won't, well.
Yeah, this doesn't, this conversation doesn't even count.
This doesn't do anything.
Other than I want to know that you want me to do it.
Yeah, that you're, you're gonna take. Begin the process. Begin the process. Just begin the process. So, so move.
I'll second it. Oh, Tom got it first.
All right, Tom seconded that, and any further discussion? And, okay, all those in favor?
Yep.
That's four in favor, one abstention.
Can we deduct that from our snowplowing for next winter?
Well, if it actually happens, you can, yeah.
Really?
All right, um, fiscal warrants, FY '25, 23rd AP warrant for $630,000, 78, uh, $630,078.51.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh. No is an okay answer, I'm just asking. Yeah, no, I'm good. Happy. Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Five in favor, motion passes. Was there a second on that? Sorry. We go back. I don't know if there's a second on that.
I'll second that.
Okay, Rufus second.
Rewind the tape.
Yep.
Instant replay.
This is why Karen gets paid the big bucks, and I'm only the second.
Wait, Karen gets big bucks?
All right, um, so what's next, town manager report? Kevin?
Uh, yeah, so I'm still trying to get this joint workshop with Dammer Scotta scheduled. So I want to give kudos to the select board on the west side of the river for continuing to always get those doodle poles in, hit their responses. Um, still waiting on a few other members from the east side of the river. Don't name which town that is, uh, but, uh, even if from the responses we've received, we still don't have a date or time that works for everyone. It would be a good meeting to have full attendance from both boards, so however, right now, the best case is May 5th at 6:00 PM. But I, if I don't get significant response from the town on the east side of the river by the end of the day tomorrow, I'll probably just put this another week.
So can I, I'd love to be there. Can I make a request that it doesn't happen between May 10th and the 17th?
Yeah, because you're out that, you're out.
I'm away that week.
Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, like, are there other issues that I'd be dealing with for the next week? So we're now looking at the following, the week after that.
I'm good with the 5th, as long as someone brings tacos.
Taco Tuesday.
I'll bring tacos.
Single de Mayo. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I'll bring tacos.
Make tacos, yeah.
Make tacos. Sounds great, but Tom can't make it. You're the only one.
I can make it. I think the one thing was is that six was getting close. approaching the census table.
That runs five to six?
So I might just be.
Oh, okay.
I'd have to check, but I think that they were at the third playground, so.
Not too far. Okay, so if you're a little late, I mean, I intend to, what we intend to do is first recap some of the efforts we've made on the original priorities. Like the housing and all the grants we're getting and all the things both towns have been working on to try to get some of that stuff done. So recap on that end of it, and then we'll jump into discussion on public work, so I will continue to hold 6:00 PM on the 5th, noting that Tom may be a little bit late.
I'll make, I need this.
Wow.
Man, that's, I.
We're gonna have to plan this too. All right, okay. All right.
So, so that's a, is that a no for margaritas?
After the meeting.
Yeah, there we go.
Oh, okay.
It's not a no.
It's not a no, it's a later, yeah.
Not a hard no.
All right, um, Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission has an ASK grant we had submitted, I believe I mentioned this to the board a while back. Uh, we found out last week, or now two, almost two weeks ago, that we received a $5,000 grant for us to hire a consultant to help us with this public works discussion. Conversation, so. Karen, you're making a lot of noise over there. The survey on the town logo, it's, uh, now there's a link, we've already had about 15 people respond to it, so I pretty quick getting out there and getting people's, uh, interest. So if you can help us get the word out, you know, we're considering a redesign or creation of a new logo.
I didn't miss something, right? It's just kind of, do you like it or you don't?
Yeah, that's, well, if you like it or don't, if you don't like it, or if you don't, if you like it and you don't want it to change, you're all set.
Yeah, okay.
Um, if you go any of the other route, then there's more questions.
All right.
So, yeah, it's like, well, if you just like it the way it is, we want to know that.
Yeah.
And we won't touch it, but.
All right.
Well, this is motivate. Uh, new staff and the fact that this continued, this current logo has never been approved as is. Yep. Um, it's just something that somebody apparently somebody designed and we've been using it and.
I think, I think it was admin.
Yep.
See, I don't know. I, this is where it's like, well, here's an opportunity to have a new staff person who's interested in spearheading, uh, the conversation, and so we're gonna start with a survey, get some responses back, and, uh, from there, if, if there's enough support to explore something different, we'll look to do an art contest. Uh, with, with, given that information that we've provided, so. Uh, if you get a chance to fill it out and give us some comments and feedback, we'll, we'll consolidate it and bring it back to the board for, for further process. Um, and then, uh, just, I mentioned this last time, but the town office will be closed this Wednesday at 3 o'clock. Um, we have to change out all the license plates. So the new license plates are the free and star or completely blank. Those are your options. So you walk in with your to, to renew your registration or you get a new one, those are your options unless you want to go with.
So completely blank, like the old black and white?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Really going retro, that's cool.
You have the option, which is the most confusing part for everybody who walks in the door now. Um, but the beginning, that's beginning May 1st, so if you have plates that were from April, you still haven't gotten in, you're still gonna have to get keep your chickadee plate for another year. Uh, unless you have a vanity plate or a, no.
Oh, so you will eventually have to turn in your chickadee plate to.
You'll have to, yes.
Ah, okay.
Um, so that's part of this process. So we have to get rid of, we have to do an inventory of all of the current license plates.
Yeah.
Move them out and move in all the new stuff.
Yep.
And for staff to do that in and try to wait on people, it's gonna be difficult, so we're closing a little earlier on Wednesday to make sure we can get this done right. Oh, yeah.
Just, just to be completely clear.
Yep.
Nobody has to rush down after that to get their new plate.
No.
They'll just do it in the normal course of their next registration.
Thank you for saying that, Ben, yes. At, at every, it's not May 1st show up and get your new plate, it's show up when your car needs to be registered or re-registered. That's when you come in and get your new plate.
Yeah.
So, and that's what I'm saying, like, if you have an April 2024 plate and you didn't get it, or you didn't go get your registration by the end of this month, you're still gonna keep your plate for another year, you're gonna wait till April of 2026 before you get a new plate.
I was just thinking, people are mobbing the DMV right now because of the whole real ID thing.
That's right, yeah.
Eight-hour wait lines, it's ridiculous. Yeah, this is time to wow. The whole license plate thing is timed well.
So you have a, uh, what they call vanity plate? You have your own license plate?
You can reserve the number you already have.
Oh, you can keep the number.
Which image do you get?
I don't know, I think you gotta go. You have to.
You can still choose, you can still choose.
But it has to be made before you register.
Oh, so what will happen? No, they'll probably give you a temporary plate until it's arrived. It's, oh, yeah, and staff are real happy about it.
I imagine so.
What motivated that bullwhack?
Um, the, the plates are starting to have, the chickadee plates are starting to have some issues.
Yeah.
So there was this recognition that, well, now maybe we do a redesign. I mean, redesign, potentially redesigning our logo.
I did see a post from the Bangor Police Department that they had pulled somebody over with, uh, 24-year expired registration. They're like, this, you know, the new plates will kind of take care of that sort of thing.
You can't, you can't claim COVID.
Yeah, you can't claim COVID anymore, exactly.
All right, I think that's it.
Okay.
With no objection, meaning adjourned. At 8:37.
Nice job, everybody.